Councillors, ladies and gentlemen, we have been signing for the way of the Mayor, councillor, Karl Thompson. I'm going to be my manager director, the leader of the group.
If you could begin, I received apologies from absent members, please. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I received apologies from councillors Cray, Leighton, Lindridge, De Avro, Lee Bolles, Jill Hargreaves, Cook, Oliver Johnson. Do we have any declarations of interest from members? So here comes the following. Shall I read this out to you today? We're going to decide to request an extraordinary meeting of full council to debate the conservation area management plans that were approved by the Adalts and Community Services Committee on the 7th of November 2024 and pass any questions that may arise as part of the discussion. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry. It's disappointing that we're here this evening and I apologize everybody for calling out for a mandatory council meeting. It wasn't necessary. At the meeting about the Community Services, as I referred to, there was a clear request, both for myself and then a motion that was proposed and seconded by committee members, that this decision, we refer to as full council. Unfortunately, that motion and seconded wasn't taken as a vote, as it should have been, and therefore we find ourselves in a position of disappointment. Yes, I appreciate that members may or may not have read the report that went into the committee, but to summarise, the Headland and Seating Conservation Area Management Plans have recently been out for consultation. There was a significant amount of work done, and certainly from a Headland point of view, I don't see the public engaged in a consultation run by this council as much as I thought so it is engaged, as I have this. There were dozens, if not hundreds, of people who attended those consultations here and made their feelings very known, and this was highlighted in the report itself, which shared some of the frustration and some of the concerns raised by members of the public, however, were completely dismissed as part of the final report. The document that was presented to the committee is exactly the same word for word as it appeared when in draft form before I wrote out consultation, which tells me that it was already decided it was never going to be amended, and that once again, it was a fake consultation, I had absolutely no intention of listening to members of the public, which again is really, really frustrating, and that's why I was really pleased with the committee itself, and both the recommendation, I believe it was actually from the authority, councillor Body, after it was mentioned by a member of the public, to reconstitute a conservation area advisory board, which would allow these discussions to be had before the management plan was agreed. There was absolutely no reason to agree there on the day, there's no financial implications, there was no pressing time period for it, but what was asked for by committee members, and what was performed to in a vote to the committee, were two very different things. The committee were asked to, the committee itself, I apologize, asked for the new advisory body to be set up, and then for the report itself to be sent to that advisory body to be discussed and consulted upon. What was the option that was given to you members on the day was to send the advisory body, put a really good report. Now, what is the point in that? What is the point in sending put advisory body to ask our opinions on something if we're already going to sign it off, we can not take any more suffering? It makes absolutely no point, and once again, just throws mud in the face of the public in, with once again, a fake consultation. All that's being asked for, all I've asked for, all members of the public have asked for, all members of the public have asked for, is for us to rethink the decision, and let's have a conversation about the use of modern materials in conservation areas, specifically the two that we're talking about today. People don't live in British, people don't live in the big museum, these people told us, these people's like us, and I appreciate some of the arguments from other members, is that what we're arguing about today is a small piece of a much larger report, and it is, the report is by itself, it's largely plastic, there's lots of good things in there, but the small parts that we're told, it's just a small part of that, it's actually a massive part of it. People have us up here, the people who came here after living in those houses, the people who I spoke to, they were on there very recently, who I believe is in the audience tonight, Public Gallery, sorry, they're living in a house at the moment, the windows are off, the leaky condensation is causing mold, they can't replace the windows because if they were going to replace it, they won't be hit with probably about £9,000 bill to replace it in the timber that we want. As your family in those types of buildings, they can't afford to do that, and it's about time we recognize as a council that we can't keep forcing people into these positions if we're not going to help, and clearly we don't have the money to help them, so let's meet them halfway, and let's do that. I'm happy to hear thoughts from other people, but if you have some other points and potential motions, Madam Mayor, I can see you have options.
Yes, I understand. Thank you, Chair. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for that. You have made some points which I'm sure you know also made tonight. I think it's important to be clear what these management plans are, whether they're not. As you said, these plans are a bit of documents, they are fantastic documents, Harry the Witch, and very heritage, environment and history, scene crew and heaven. They certainly have its actual character, the style, and the uniqueness of these areas. They emphasise the special architectural and historic interests of these areas, and these plans are commissioned for costs, Headland, Seating Crew are at risk. What these plans are not are not documents that dictate what people can do with their homes, that's not their purpose. The plan's a wish list, suggestions to take the heritage of these special areas, the outline that everybody can work together to better manage the heritage in these areas. The plan sets out 31 different actions that contribute to conservation of these areas. As councillor Oates said, the issue that seeks to derail this is action three, and it says this, "Harvey Woodbury Council will encourage the retention of original windows and doors, they will discourage their replacements with UPVC and andropic alternatives, and will encourage reinstatement of suitable materials and suitable designs if lost." The documents, which is in there, it says that. We have decided simply for the rest of Seating Crew and Heads, as we know that our conservation areas are important, they come at a high cost for residents of some of these areas, we have decided committed to engaging in a meaningful conversation with all parties, residents and other bodies, to improve our conservation areas across the town, and what the future looks like, and obviously we invite opposition councillors for those conversations as well. We have achieved to preserve our heritage for future generations, but we can work with the public as part of that process. It's better to have that conversation in a space where we can work constructively together rather than derail this report on one action. What will not change is planning will still have the final say on any alterations of those windows, that decree has not changed today. In the background, the management plans are commissioned from respected heritage consultants per se and Historic England with input from AVC offices. To reject these plans would be either unwise for this reason, you may not know how the Woodbury Council have an increasingly effective relationship with Historic England, to reject this report would suggest that we don't care about heritage of the town, and I am a woman, I'm a woman somewhere else. The decision made by the Adalts and Community Services Committee on the 7th of November set out compromise, including acceptance of the management plans and the creation of a conservation area advisory committee. Chair, the meeting itself, I have to say, is held in a cooperative collegiate manner. Recommendations were agreed on by all members from all sides that were sent, so it was particularly disappointing to see the name of councillor Woodbury and little of a request for this meeting tonight. The recommendations are sound, the decision made at the meeting is appropriate, that the management plan be accepted and conservation area advisory will be formed to look at the management plans and provide any important future actions. This is the course of action that we will decide, we intend to pursue, and decide to work together with residents of the Headland and Seating Crew. And just like I said, as a gentleman, we discussed this before, that the chair of planning is going to make himself available to chat, talk, talk about any issues he may have afterwards if he wishes to do so. Thank you, Chair.
Hi, thank you, councillor Allen, for that. Just a couple of points, characteristics and style. Didn't realise characteristics and style actually is determined by the materials that you use. There's a window there, that is the characteristics and style of the heritage, yet it's used with modern technology and for modern materials. There is no leeway. We're going, if you're going to make the news, wood, the putting and single glaze, then you're adding additional tax to the people who want to live in the heritage area, because in the meantime, they're going to have to replace those windows, and they're going to have to lose their light guide. So instead of living in a town centre where you would be using windows in my pond, then you're going to have to replace those windows everywhere else. There's a gentleman there just saying pictures, he is on the island, he can't rent them outside his house, but the house itself is damp, and there's damp on the walls, the paint's cut off on the inside, if he was to rent that property out, it would be deemed too illegal, yet he's expected to live there because we decided that it's heritage area, and he can't actually rent the outside of his house. The plan may be a plan, but it's written down, and it's something for Sarah Star to refer back to. Sarah Star is actually quite rigid in the things that she wants to keep, especially in the council, so please don't name her in our speech. Because we often, I must come up with that time. They are quite rigid in their proposals to the residents in Seating. Those businesses who have to render in a certain water, and every year they have to pay, settle to bought and rented in exactly the same water. It's not suitable for our climate, it's changing, you're on the seafront, it's got all of the elements in it, so we're now adding, and I say tax, but we're now adding the next reverberant onto that business, it's already struggling because we've decided it has to be this, this line water. The safety foretale could not maintain the ballroom because it needed to be climb water, and the water had gone pouring through, and it ended up closing down. That was that detriment, that business as long as, as well as anything else, but they finally closed down. You don't engage after a plan, you engage before a plan, so engage all of these people sat here before you decide that this plan is ready to go ahead.
What is your motion, Chair? Sorry, Chair, you don't say that on a motion here, my understanding is, as this report has been accepted by the Adalts and Community Services Committee, it cannot currently be reopened for six months, so therefore can I ask what we are actually aiming to achieve this evening, because it's, as much as these conversations are lovely, we actually need something to work towards. Thank you, Chair.
Do you want to come first, or which one?
You should, please. I'd just like to, councillor Allen, my name is Allen Stokem, I will stand. Thank you.
Just to answer councillor Doherty's question, the purpose here this evening is, as the requisition stated, to discuss what was brought for Adalts and Community Services, and consider any motion that comes forward as part of that discussion. So I appreciate you might all decided to put a hunk of doubt in the bunker and not change on the decision whatever is set this evening, I appreciate that.
I'm not sure if anybody's saying that.
That's exactly what it feels like to me, and I'm sure it feels like that to members of the public as well, and I appreciate the advice I've made in the interim, that says that the decision can't be overturned in six months, but I would ask, where in the constitution it specifically states that the, that full council cannot overturn the decision of the committee? It clearly states that committees cannot overturn its own decision within six months, it clearly states that council cannot overturn its decision within six months, but it does not anywhere in the procedural rules state that full council cannot overturn the decision of the committee.
My, my view is that the six months rule does apply, the rules apply to committee meetings, full council are delegated their powers to determine the conservation area plans, they've delegated that down to the Adalts and Community Services Committee, so it wouldn't be right for just five members every time they don't agree with the decision to then call an extraordinary meeting to try to reverse the decision. The only way to do that in the constitution is to consider a reference to council, which is Rule 25, and requires, I can't remember the exact number, but it applies more than half of the elected members to put forward to assign requisition to that effect.
Councillor Body. Next, please, I. Thank you, councillor Body.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm obliged to councillor move because it is entirely right, I was sitting there, you were sitting behind me when it took place on the 7th, no member, and I did move and was very keen to engender support with the committee for an advisory group to be set up to assist, assist and give views on matters to do with all the conservation areas. I realise that we're particularly talking about Headland and particularly talking about Seating tonight, but we have another six, and they are all of equal importance to the heritage and well-being department. I also am very much aware that the issue, particularly the use of UPVC, has caused over many years a great deal of angst and emotional distress, because some of the more traditional approaches to restoration of work on houses are very expensive. There's no point in pretending otherwise, that is the case. We used to have an advisory committee that was made up, I would say, first and foremost, residents and businesses in the areas, but equally valid was the contribution made by organisations such as English Heritage, Historic England, valid professional learned organisations that could come to a view on matters to do with our conservation areas. That advisory group was able to dispatchantly, because residents were involved, and very importantly involved, in their discussions about planning matters in the conservation areas, their views were dispatchantly given to the planning committee. The planning committee could then take on without the emotional baggage, because sometimes that's exactly what happened, without the emotional baggage, how best to proceed with each and every individual planning application? It was immense importance that we had that view, and it was very, very valuable to receive the view. I have to stress that each and every client application rises or falls on its own merits. You can't have a blanket policy, and in terms of political groupings, we are not allowed to decide on individual planning matters, not allowed to. We cannot take a political view on an individual planning matter. So the planning committee, as I think Madam Mayor would say, often, not always, but often comes to an alternative view to the one that's proposed. So we do it as best we can, but it would be far, far better if we had a dispatchant view of an advisory group that was involved and partly steered by residents, I would say, so that we could sit down and get that view without people understandably getting quite emotional and angst about it. To do that, we have to, we have to accept this report, because otherwise we've got nothing to base things on. It's not prescriptive, it's advisory, and our officers will use it, because if they don't, the planning committee will tell them, will use it as an advisory tool.
Thank you, councillor Body.
So I would.
Thank you, councillor Body.
I would say, go with what the committee decided on the 7th of November, because it was the correct.
Thank you, councillor Body. Councillor Mitch.
Madam Mayor, I appreciate the view from the chief solicitor, but I won't be able to get a hold of exactly which procedural rule within there says that the council cannot overturn the decision of the committee, and just because it hasn't been done before doesn't mean it shouldn't be. But moreoverly, I appreciate the comments from your demos, and I agree wholeheartedly with all of it. The only thing I can talk to you about is the last point, when you said that the decision that was made, if you were correct one, because if my memory serves me correctly, you and I shared the same view, that the revulsion of being accepted until it went to the advisory committee, and in fact, I remember you proposing it, it being seconded, that it doesn't get, doesn't get approved, sorry, it goes to the advisory body. And I'm sure there's somebody else here this evening who would corroborate that, but the point is, that was said, it was seconded, and once again, it wasn't picked by the chair, and therefore it was ignored, which is extremely disappointing. I appreciate the comments that say that this is just an advisory document, and it is, I would encourage the use of traditional materials. It may just be advisory, and it may just encourage, but the problem is, when a planning application comes forward, these documents are referred to by officers, by planning officers, and if the member of the public knows to get in touch with a ward member beforehand to get advice for this call decision in, their application will be determined by the planning officer based on these documents. So these documents that you've proved will specifically say, yeah, the might just say they're encouraged, but planning officers have been being encouraged as that's what we want, and I had a conversation with a planning officer this afternoon who said exactly that, they will take the recommendation from here, and whilst it says encourage, that is what they will aim to do. They will, they will basically not approve the use of modern materials because of that fact. If you want to move progress, Madam Mayor, I'll make, I'll make my first motion in the chair. So clearly, the members opted and prepared to budge on the conservation area management plan as they have approved. I'm giving a motion now, councillor Doherty.
Stop saying you're not doing anything.
Pardon? Well, which is what I'm doing. So the area conservation area appraisal, not management plan, the area conservation area appraisal, section 7.1.2, says that it's, any modern materials used must be replicated as closely as possible. So, and there's, there's other around that. So I would move, Madam Mayor, as a motion, that we amend paragraph two within the Headland Conservation Area Appraisal, we're not, we're not causing issue with this document, and we amend it to say it is important that the character of the headland is not lost through inappropriate obligations, so that modern materials may be used as long as they present date as closely as possible. All that comes in there is change one or two words, and that isn't something that's been determined in the past six months, it isn't something that members should opt to have a problem with, so.
Can I get some clarity off you, please?
Yes.
So your motion is not with regard to the report as read, but with regard to another document?
Another document.
Which we haven't disclosed to you today.
It's another document that is in relation to the Headland Conservation Area. I spoke as the chief solicitor before the meeting started, we have confirmation that I could make motions to alter other documents.
Okay, I'll second that. As long as it, as long as it relates to the.
That isn't what you said, to be fair.
You didn't tell me what the, didn't you, Madam?
I just, I just said.
You didn't tell me what.
No, I just said, could you change other documents? You said yes, and given.
Well, that's like saying you change.
It's in relation, Madam Mayor, it's in relation to Headland Conservation Area, this document is specifically the Headland Conservation Area.
Just calm this down, please. My understanding from the table where I have in front of me is that you have brought this to an extraordinary council meeting because of a report that went through Adalts and community. That is what we will decide on today, not any secondary documentation, which has not been.
And I'm not going to say this is a recognition, and to consider any motions that arise as part of it.
In my opinion, that is not part of that.
But it has arisen as part of the discussion, Madam Mayor.
The part that you've brought.
Okay, so what you're saying is, the group refuse to change.
That's not what I'm saying.
You're saying you refuse to change the floor plan as it currently is, because you want someone to.
Because I think the words I'm putting now, nobody is saying that. What is being said is that our council will use its planning department appropriately, anybody who wants to change their windows can put it to the planning department, can consult their ward councillor, and have it heard by committee. And as we have a platinum awarded committee and planning department, I think you, councillor Body, should be very pleased that we are willing to listen to people, bring this to the committee.
You're willing to listen to people after the fact, Chair. We're listening to people after we've already agreed the document, and therefore it's been settled.
Carry on.
Thank you, Chair. I think the continuing cooperation we clearly have across the floor, I'm happy to consider that report, others in the future, I think, to try and consider that amendment tonight, nobody agrees, nobody knows the documents exist, it's a ridiculous request.
Okay, let's go to the House.
What are you working on, the course I have been following, second is the procedural rules, say yes.
Do second it, sorry. My liking, please.
Are we allowed to speak, Tony?
No, sorry. But what will happen at the end of this meeting, we will have, we will have you to stay back and have a conversation with you, but this very formal meeting, as ruled by constitution, must follow.
Will you never listen?
We'll talk here, thank you.
These meetings are the people who are here.
So I'll go to the board, because.
The councils are going to listen.
All right, that's it, I'm very much into the board.
You can see the windows come down.
Councillor Allen.
Four times.
So the Labour Party. We need to go to vote, we can't do that while people are shouting.
I'm having it, I'm here, this is the people. The people who put you here.
Okay, this is not the time.
Yes, it is.
The constitution, the constitution states clearly the way these meetings must be run. We are more than happy to discuss with each and every one of you.
No, you're not.
Yes, we are.
No, you're not.
Yes, we are.
No, you're not.
Councillor Allen.
You should talk to all the people.
Councillor Bennington, against. Councillor Body.
Against.
Councillor Boothman.
Oh.
Councillor Clayton.
Against.
Councillor Creavy, against. Councillor Derby.
Oh.
Councillor Dodd.
Against.
Shot.
Councillor Dunbar.
Against.
Councillor Feeney.
Against.
Councillor Hall.
Against.
Councillor Harrison, against. Councillor Holbrook.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Johnson. Councillor Lee. Councillor Little.
Oh.
Councillor Mayor.
Against.
Councillor Martin Wells. Councillor Law.
Oh.
Councillor Moly.
Against.
Councillor Nelson.
Against.
Councillor Reed. Councillor Middle.
Against.
Councillor Roy. Councillor Shaw.
Against.
Councillor Smith.
Oh.
Councillor Thompson.
Against.
Councillor Wilson.
I want to just be honest, Sheriff.
I'm glad, Madam Mayor. And when it's asked whether members of the public can speak, you said that we need to follow procedural rules within the council. It is within the decision of the chair of council to allow members of the public to speak in council, and there is precedent of that. When this is time, many of us speak to council freely, so ultimately, Sheriff, this is coming down to you. There is the option, if you wanted to hear members here this evening. And so I'll ask you formally, would you be prepared to allow members of the public to speak?
No, let me speak clearly. This council meeting is not here to have shouting. We do not mean to have people, people under pressure of standing up independently and saying what is on our mind. We are more than happy at the end of this meeting to stay behind and talk to people. That is not a problem. We will not have independent speech in this meeting today. Councillor Creamy.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And I'd just like to propose that we put forward a motion to take Shane's suggestion for the Headland and Sydney Conservation Area appraisal document to back Adults and Community.
Do we want to record a vote, or shall we have a short answer?
Surely, but on the heels of what happens in second quarter, you can put them.
Can we take that back, or can we read that back for me?
I think the proposal, Sheriff, was for the appraisal documents. But I don't think it's been Adults, I think it was the Conservation Area Management Plan, but doing it to be considered Adults Services Committee to take on board, Councillor Shane suggested in his original motion. So I think what was being said is we refer the appraisal documents to Adults Services Committee to vote about that.
Wouldn't be able to consider that amendment.
To consider that amendment.
Sheriff, well, I don't disagree with that. And I'm, oh, can I ask on procedural point, you then, given, I've just asked us to make an alteration, and given what, so the motion wasn't amended, it was all against, how are we able to do that to you?
Yes, because it's not rescinded in the original meeting decision, it's looking at something different.
Okay, let's go with the short answer, who was in favour of taking this to Adults Committee to discuss further?
I think that's your members.
Thank you.
And in the meantime, while these documents are replaced, it means that anybody wanting to make operations, they're still going to be hit with the same punitive action that they've had.
That's not true, is it, Councillor Boddy? We both know that, that's not true. Can I ask who brought the window in?
The gentleman who wanted to speak to me.
Are you the chap who brought that window to planning committee?
Yes, yes.
And didn't we pass that window?
This has been passed.
Thank you. So people are not being punished, people are given the opportunity to take their pace to planning committees, that's what planning committees are.
So, whilst I'm saying, in the meantime, while these documents are replaced and these decisions are replaced, it will still be hit with punitive action if, if they don't know the rules. And whilst you just correctly find that, Sheriff, that the council committee has decided to agree use of modern materials on a number of applications. I will guarantee you, every single one of those applications has been brought forward because a ward member has called that decision in. Now, if a member of the public is wanting to make an operation, they're hoping to know...
I need to correct you on that point.
Please do.
I have sat on many planning committees that have passed windows without any involvement from ward councillor.
The only reason it's got there is because a ward member has called that decision, Sheriff, it is, that is hard for the planning. I'm still speaking, Sheriff. We're still speaking. So as I was saying, unless a member of the public knows to contact their ward councillor before they put their application in, their application will simply be determined by planning officers. And planning officers will look at these documents and base their decision on these documents, the local plan and decision from heritage officers and others. So...
To clarify my language, Councillor Boddy, we're talking about encourage and discourage. Would you agree with that, that's what's in the report?
Yes.
There is no punitive action in discouragement.
I think there is. It's subjective, then, Sheriff.
It's subjective, it's a subjective fact.
So my point is, Sheriff, that unless a member of the public knows, they will have their application rejected automatically by members. And if you, a story, quite a sad one for me. Well, I know you're very, very mad, Sheriff, because I think it's maybe deserved to have a story told. So I was dealing with a member of the public from York Terrace a number of couple of years back. She called me up absolutely distraught, tears down the phone because a panicked decision to replace a window had automatically been rejected by planning officers. She didn't know to speak to a ward member beforehand. The decision was, as I said, was rejected and she was not talking to me, decided herself how to figure out what we could do next. I thought I'd give her a call back in a couple of hours with some options to see what we could do. About two hours later, I received a phone call from her neighbour to say, I know you're expecting to call, which is, back, but my suggestion, do not, because since she had that telephone call, she's had a massive heart attack and sadly passed away. Now, I'm not saying that decision caused bad, but I don't say it played a part in her stress levels at that point in time. What I'm trying to do, Madam Mayor, is avoid situations like this. So I would make another motion to council this evening to amend the planning delegation scheme so that any application received in a conservation area, not just online, but in a conservation area, the new windows are doors is automatically called in to the planning committee.
Thank you, Councillor Creamy.
Thank you. So can I just make one thing clear to all of the members of the public here tonight? So every single planning decision goes to every single, to the ward councillors. So your ward councillors can call in those decisions. Your ward councillors, including Councillor Law, gets notifications of those things. So he can call in, he has the, he has the information given to him, as do all of our other ward councillors.
And he does every time.
As he does every time. So why are we, why are we concerned whether members of the public aren't aware of the procedure? You know the procedure.
Sometimes I may not have it, sometimes I may have it in my...
You don't get three weeks' notice.
What he said is we won't get past what's called in.
No, listen to you, you don't listen to you.
Can I just say that if you don't know that, if you do not know that, that is the procedure, you will not be heard. And actually, what can happen is not... So when you actually, if you can understand, we bring it down a little bit, because we're going to get our like, shelter to each other. Let's just bring it down a bit, continually.
Okay, so every planning decision is made on its own merits, and that's been absolutely the reason planning decisions that have been made as well. As I said, you're going to mail to councillors, all councillors, they get green mail, they get three weeks' notice, so there's plenty of time. And I just wanted to say that this advisory board should help clean this up, and this is a bit of a manufactured conflict caused by Councillor Law.
I'm going to allow this. I'm going to ask you, I'm going to ask you now, Sheriff, because this is going to be a bit... God, say. Yes, please, because I'm not sure what we're going to do.
I didn't ask, I'll be excited. So the motion...
You asked this, this specific motion, you asked...
I asked, if I can make a comment to the planning delegation team, you know.
Adam, you didn't ask me if tonight you could change the delegation scheme because the delegation scheme has to, has to pass out the constitution, has to go up the constitution.
Yes, I'll come in then. We were referring to the constitution committee, so we refer this change to the constitution committee, okay? So the motion is that this council refers the following amendment to the constitution committee, that the new planning delegation scheme so that any planning application received in a conservation area, the new windows are doors is automatically called in to the planning committee.
Seconded. Councillor Harrison.
Hey, just to make it very clear, I chaired the constitution committee and only today it was decided that we're going to actually look at the whole delegation powers which include that, so that will already be underway.
Okay, let's go to the board now, please. Well, because the motion's been...
Madam Mayor, it's put the constitution committee on the 27th of January.
The motion has been called a second amendment vote. If we can just go with the short answer, that would be easier, thank you. All in favour of this call to the constitution, have you? That is unanimous, Sheriff. Yeah. And I think that's all we need to do, thank you. I think we'll close the meeting. Any councillors who choose to stay behind and talk to members of the public next spring in the way of planning department, please do so, and feel...